Luke, your hair looks nice.
Thank you.
Did you just get it cut?
I did. The only downside is...
If you ever know anybody in this town, you got to know Ron Trace. If you want your house saved. If it's on a personal list, they're not going to fire up.
It was good.
As far as I know, I sent an email to my records.
Yeah, that's the only thing I need to know.
But I sent a thing to Jared.
Jared.
And Tim, as far as seeing lawyer or people for the project.
Jared comes back and says no, then we're good to go.
As far as I know, the only newborn said is, "How's Dad?"
Yeah. And I have a chat check on my desk. I just need Jared to tell me that you guys have never paid them any money. Yeah, all I need to know is, all I have to do is reconcile. That's it.
I have that one. I have that. It's awesome.
Yeah, don't get me started. I'm with you. Yeah, don't pay that, that's mine. Just tell me that you guys haven't paid them and that we're good.
Thank you. Most people just assume.
Hey, um, Jesse, this is my cast.
Hi, nice to meet you.
My name is Sarah Rachel Brooks from...
Okay.
So he's here. You can leave on the first meeting. She's here at the middle, but he's here at the contract section. Right. And our priority issues, he's the guy. It's quite that good, so when I text him, all that stuff.
Excellent. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Hey, how are you, Ryan? These are our documents. Yep, some of the originals. Okay. I figured last, this is the most common. Um, but you were sending me a... I'll let you know just that. Um, and... I'm okay with what's on it. So I appreciate you bringing that down. And I appreciate your efforts to work, you know, like... Yeah, yeah. And, like, hey, get that. Thank you, sir. Sixty... Um, yeah. So it... That is, yeah, we'll see where that goes. Yeah, it's gonna be interesting.
So my colleagues are going to join me just to watch.
I like your choice in the autumn colors.
Well, she likes to throw a picture away from my... Bright colors, bright colors.
I could see everyone. Yeah, but I couldn't hear.
Friday.
It was good.
What college are you in?
What school are you in?
Oh, okay.
So did you get your hair cut soon?
Oh, that was today. Okay.
I will, uh, okay. Going to get my...
Yeah. Yes, that was the, um, the Cardinal volunteer event. Um, I think I had mentioned at one of the meetings, but, yeah, they, they did, um, they were quick. They got five trees. It was an hour and they got five trees. Yeah, that was the only thing I didn't have ready for them. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, they looked good, though. They were from, uh, Turkey Book, so I'm happy. And they didn't get stuck in the containers like that one made. So, but, yeah.
I'm putting myself on the other side.
Yes, by emailing me. I can read it during the meeting.
Okay. Especially now. Whatever they say.
Do you want my password?
Mine, ask.
Very secret password.
I mean, I'm not comfortable with that.
No, no, no. It's, it's just being... There you go. Do you have my password? I'm pretty busy. Huh? He said he'd go. There's a couple of free chairs towards the front if people want to squeeze in here to not stand. I'm thinking, "Oh, shit." He knows he's...
I'm sending it to everyone.
I could see everyone. Yeah, but I couldn't hear. She definitely wouldn't be...
It was good.
It's like, "Oh, man." It's like, "What college are you in?" "What school are you in?"
Oh, okay.
So did you get your hair cut soon?
Oh, that was today. Okay.
I was, uh, okay. Going to get my...
Yeah. Yes, that was the, um, the Cardinal volunteer event. Um, I think I had mentioned at one of the meetings, but, yeah, they, they did, um, they were quick. They got five trees. It was an hour and they got five trees. Yeah, that was the only thing I didn't have ready for them. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, they looked good, though. They were from, uh, Turkey Book, so I'm happy. And they didn't get stuck in the containers like that one made.
That's huge. Just two dogs.
So, but, yeah.
Emailing me. I can read it during the meeting.
Okay. Especially now. Whatever they say.
Do you want my password?
Mine, ask.
Very secret password.
I mean, I'm not comfortable with that.
No, no, no. It's, it's just being... There you go. Do you have my password? I'm pretty busy. Huh? He said he'd go. There's a couple of free chairs towards the front if people want to squeeze in here to not stand. There's two chairs up front if anyone wants to sit down. What? Let's do it. Let's not be going with you. Are you okay? Yeah, yeah, I got it. Did you get knocked off?
It's not working for me. I'm just gonna put my... Really, I need to see the... From the library.
Mechanicsburg Borough Council meeting and committee session will come to order. I would like to start with two announcements. The first is that the meetings of Mechanicsburg Borough Council are being recorded and livestreamed for the purposes of transparency and increased public access. The livestream, along with recordings of previously held meetings, can be accessed on the Borough's YouTube channel. Second announcement is that I would like to read a joint statement of Mechanicsburg Borough Council and the mayor. The reported distribution of hate-based literature at our community's Halloween parade has left us deeply saddened and disturbed. Although our police department reported no illegal activity during the event, this act directly contradicts our shared values in the borough of Mechanicsburg. We want to state clearly and without reservation that any message or organization promoting racism, intimidation, or discrimination stands in direct opposition to the values of our community. Our community is founded on the principle that all individuals are created equal and that we strive to foster an environment of love, inclusion, and mutual respect. We celebrate the rich diversity of our residents and endeavor to ensure that everyone in our community feels safe, valued, and welcome. The Halloween parade is meant to be a joyful, family-filled, family-friendly event that brings our community together. We will work with the Mechanicsburg Chamber of Commerce, who plans the Halloween parade, and other community organizations to continue to uphold these values. Borough Council and the mayor join together with the Mechanicsburg community to stand united against racism and hate. We remain committed to fostering a borough where compassion prevails and every person is treated with dignity and respect. We thank our residents, businesses, and local organizations who daily, who work daily to make Mechanicsburg a welcoming and safe place for all. Signed, all members of Borough Council and Mayor. Moving on, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Constitution, and to the justice for all. Roll call, please.
President Milak.
Here.
Vice President Anthony.
Here.
Councilwoman Agarson. Here. Councilman Boucher.
Here.
Councilwoman Martin. Here. Councilman O'Neal.
Here.
Mayor Ritter.
Here.
Solicitor Cassidy.
Present.
Engineer Jongzyn.
Here.
Chief Lenny.
Here.
CEC Hockenberry. Here. Manager Thompson.
Here, ma'am.
Manager Novinger. Here. PEM Arnold.
Here.
PWB Lear.
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of the agenda, is there any additions or items to remove from the consent agenda or regular agenda? Hearing none, are there any amendments or changes to the proposed minutes? Hearing none, is there a motion for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Vice President Anthony moves. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilwoman Agarson seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, the agenda is approved. Moving on to citizens' comments. Uh, we have a period here of citizens' comment where this time is usually reserved for residents and is limited to three minutes. Is there anyone here for citizens' comment this evening? Yes. You, please approach the podium, state your name and address.
Oh, this is the first time, oh, sorry. Emily, Uniac 116 East Keller Street. Uh, this is the first time I've ever come to one of these, and so tell me if I'm going to the right place. Thanks. So, um, like, I'm sure a lot of you have seen the, uh, card for the WKKK, uh, put in a child's bag. I live on Keller Street. I sit at the corner for that parade, a children's parade, and I... I know that you can't go through every single person attending a parade, obviously, and, um, I, we love the parade, too, by the way. It's fantastic. But, um, I definitely, uh, think myself and other people in the community would like to hear from you guys steps moving forward to help maybe deter that happening again and know that because that happened, maybe the parade will not be canceled. Like, that's also a concern, obviously, but know that at least that we will try to do better with providing a children's parade for the children and be more aware of people coming in doing nefarious things. Um, because it's such a great community event. It's wonderful, and we just love it. So, and seeing that on the news was just, you know, you don't really think of it until you see it. Well, I think of it as a woman, but, um, it was definitely a shock, and I don't want to see it again. That's, that's pretty much it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Sure.
If, if I may, I, I suspect that there are quite a few members of the community here this evening that share the sentiment of, of the last speaker. Um, and, um, the last speaker just, uh, asked council to be proactive in trying to prohibit, uh, repeat behavior in the future, future activities. Um, I think it's important for everyone here to be, um, aware of the fact that, um, there's a First Amendment that, that guarantees the right of, of freedom of speech, freedom of association, um, when it comes to open public forums such as a children's Halloween parade. Um, I, I believe I, I join everyone here in, um, that feeling of disgust over the information that was shared at the children's, uh, Halloween parade. Um, but that being said, there, there is a, uh, First Amendment right to freedom of speech and freedom of association, and that extends to, um, people engaging in offensive behavior and speaking, uh, offensive, uh, thoughts, uh, even at children's Halloween parade, as unspeakable as that is. Um, there's, as a, as a practical matter, as a legal matter, there's very little, if anything, that could be done to prohibit that kind of behavior in the future. Um, it's very circumstantial, um, on a case-by-case basis, but in terms of what occurred at the, this past, um, Halloween parade, there was nothing that occurred that, um, where the borough or the borough, um, police department could have done anything to prevent that from happening. Um, in fact, had the borough police department taken action against those individuals, that would have been a violation of constitutional rights, and that would have exposed the borough to, um, extreme jeopardy from a financial standpoint if the borough would have taken steps to prohibit that from happening. Um, so it's, it's a very complicated matter. Um, but I think the most important thing is for the community to gather, like you're doing this evening, and showing unity with respect to, um, not standing up for, um, this kind of behavior, uh, this, these, uh, thoughts and ideas that are being proffered by this marginal organization, and let them know that they're not welcome here. But when it comes to law enforcement or the borough taking action, quashing an individual's right to engage in free speech or freedom of association draws the line, unfortunately. So I, I just think it's important to level set, um, in terms of expectations, um, when it comes to distasteful situations like this.
Thank you, Solicitor Cassidy, for keeping us grounded on the legal aspects. And for those who just entered the room, I want to make, I want to make clear that we did issue, perhaps before you came in, a statement, uh, that was a joint statement by Borough Council and the mayor, and that although there may not be things, uh, that we can legally do, uh, that might infringe on someone else's First Amendment right, it is our First Amendment right to express that these are not the values of our community, and that's not what we stand for as a community, and, um, that's what we felt we needed to do tonight, so that's why we issued the joint statement. At this point, I'd like to continue with public comment and ask that you come forward and state your name, address, and, uh, your three minutes, they're yours, for your First Amendment rights. Yes, sir.
You could just come on up to the podium. No one has to...
You don't have to raise your hand.
And in fact, get in line if you'd like to. Yeah.
You could even get in line.
My name is Usman Rodriguez. My address is 835 Cardinal Drive. Um, I appreciated the statement that was made. I was curious, um, if there's an intention or anything that can be done to share that more widely with the community to know that, um, more people in the community are aware of that stance, sort of as a formal...
Yes.
By the formal leadership of, of the borough.
As we've been speaking, the statement has been published to our social media channels, and if you would like, you can share that statement.
Okay. Okay. Um, I guess another thing that I at least just wanted to express is that, um, I expected that there would be a mention of, of the, the First Amendment right and how it includes hate speech and its protection. Um, so I'm definitely not making any kind of legal argument, but I do feel like, um, and I suspect many of the people who've come today, um, would like also some transparency and understanding, like, who or what parties may have been responsible? Because I understand there's a freedom of speech, but I don't know that there's a freedom of anonymity. Um, and in the interest of using our First Amendment right to speak out, it would be helpful to know who to speak to. Um, and I think another one of the things that I imagine many people are taking reservation with is, um, it's also the way that it was done. The fact that it was done, um, in what seemed to be a secret, secretive way, um, targeted towards children, which are especially vulnerable. Um, so e- even taking into account, like, the protection of the speech, which I, I understand is an important thing to protect, I do feel like there are other elements that rightfully rile up, um, could cause concern for the, the community members, and I've just, I do think some of those things could, could be addressed or would help. Um, as I said, um, they exercise their right to free speech. Everybody else here has the, the exact same right to, to respond to them in kind, and it's, it's not possible to do that if you hide in anonymity. So I just wanted to...
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Alex White. I live at 1327 English Drive. I'm gonna, I'm gonna tilt this up a little bit because I'm, uh, craning my neck here. Um, well, I appreciate your statement. Um, I, I had written a beautiful speech, but, uh, you had covered it much more eloquently than I could, so I really, really appreciate that. Um, I think, you know, I'm not alone in feeling a little bit helpless, I think, in the community right now with what we've seen happen. Um, I brought my boys with me. We were at the Halloween parade, and I was racking my brain to figure out where were these people? Did I see them, as I imagine, you know, many others were in the community? Um, in that, I think what we would like, or I'm not, I'm not speaking for everyone, but what my sons and I would like to see is action. Um, and I know, completely respect what you shared. I don't disagree with anything there. Um, however, as someone who grew up in the South with grandparents and great-grandparents that stood against the KKK in their communities, um, this is not a civil organization. They have a well-documented history of violence and intimidation in communities, and the FBI has repeatedly said that these type of occurrences where propaganda has been introduced into communities is the first step, and intimidation and violence come shortly after that. So what I would ask is, how do we document this? How do we alert the FBI here? How do we get others involved? Not that we are trying to squash someone's rights, not that we are asking people to, to silence them or anything like that. Simply, let's document it, let's be proactive in our communities in finding this. What sort of systems do we have in the community? Is there neighborhood watch that can be more aware? Do we have a process for documenting these things when we see them? What you all shared is perfect. It's, it's amazing. We, I want action, and I want action for my family. I don't want to see this continue to happen over and over again in our community. So, thank you for all that you do. Really, really appreciate it. I'm guessing this is not a typical Tuesday night for you all. Um, really, really appreciate the platform that you've provided the community here to share our concerns and looking forward to what, to see what you all are able to do.
And I, I'm gonna speak out of turn because I do a lot. I break the rules. But there are, um, federal agencies that have been alerted personally by members of this council, um, that will continue to track this behavior, and they are aware of individuals that could be in the community. So if you guys continue, Southern Poverty Law Center is a really good one to reach out to. And when these things happen, I encourage people to document and to alert the authorities to that because there's a lot of things, um, they like to travel across the country.
Sure. Yeah. Thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah. Thank you all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here that would like to make a statement? Uh, for citizens' comment? Go on once. Voice? We got one.
Hello, I'm terrified of public speaking, so bear with me as my voice shakes. Um, my name is Sheila Peterson. I live at 475 Berkshire Lane in Mechanicsburg. I am also an educator here in Mechanicsburg, so I'm here on behalf of myself, but also the students that I serve in my community. Um, I understand that the First Amendment does protect freedom of speech, but I think we, as a community, need a plan to move forward to show that hate has no home here, that love wins, and that there is far more love in this town than there is hate. So if there is a way that we can plan some sort of event where we can just let the community know that you belong here, you are wanted here, I think that would be a helpful way to move forward. I do appreciate your statement at the beginning of tonight, uh, but I think we need more than the statement. We need action, and we need to show that there's far more love than there is hate.
Agreed. And I think we have a lot of great community organizations that can help out with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, council. My name is, uh, Kaye Brooks. I am from, uh, 134 Roslin Avenue. I'm not very close to here, but I do, um, travel around here quite frequently. Um, I'm non-binary and mixed race. I think this, this is very important to state because we are all part of this racial caste system, and we need to abolish this. Now, a lot of you may be looking at me like I'm crazy, thinking, "Okay, Jim Crow ended in 1964," but let's take a minute to think of the things that have happened over the years. In 2016, the last school was desegregated in Cleveland School District of Mississippi. That was in 2016. There are still active court orders today under active court-supervised desegregation, meaning there are still schools that are segregated. In between racial injustices happening across the country, there was the national tragedies of George Floyd and Breonna Taylor, taken too soon by the system designed to hurt them. I come from a strong family of black intelligence, so much so that when all ten of my grandparents and great aunts and uncles were in children, were children in school, they would be called Oreos because they were black on the outside and white on the inside. Obviously, there is a huge racial implication that intelligence is a whites-only attribute. This was back in 1965. My grandma was 11. Flash forward to 2010. I was nine years old, 46 years after that event, after the Jim Crow era. Um, I was in elementary school, not too far from here, and the kids were going around giving kids Oreo flavors, and I was the peanut butter Oreo because I wasn't dark enough, but I was white on the inside. To be considered an Oreo, this is colorism, uh, this colorism has existed for hundreds of years, since the transatlantic slave trade, and it is time that we properly educate and punish those dangerous radical rhetoric, this, this dangerous rhetoric, um, that is getting black children harmed and killed. My family has been on the East Coast for six generations, and the colorism is the same. We need to be doing this type of anal, analysis in our houses, in our grocery stores, our neighborhoods, our government, and our schools. This is a group effort, and if you don't contribute to the harm that it causes, especially when reinforcing, uh, referencing ICE having an aggressive force affecting the necessary aspects of our community, you want this mass incarceration for innocent people but have a lax judgment for the KKK, whose message is to harm all non-Christians, non-whites, but... Really, really appreciate the platform that you've provided the community here to share our concerns. And looking forward to what, to see what you all are able to do.
And I'm gonna speak out of turn because I do a lot. I break the rules. But there are federal agencies that have been alerted personally by members of this council that will continue to track this behavior. And they are aware of individuals that could be in the community. So if you guys continue, Southern Poverty Law Center is a really good one to reach out to. And when these things happen, I encourage people to document and to alert the authorities to that because there's a lot of things they like to travel across the country.
Sure. Yeah. Thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that would like to make a statement? For citizens comment? Go on once. Voice? We got one.
Hello, I'm terrified of public speaking, so bear with me as my voice shakes. My name is Sheila Peterson. I live at 475 Berkshire Lane in Mechanicsburg. I am also an educator here in Mechanicsburg. So I'm here on behalf of myself, but also the students that I serve in my community. I understand that the First Amendment does protect freedom of speech, but I think we as a community need a plan to move forward to show that hate has no home here, that love wins, and that there is far more love in this town than there is hate. So if there is a way that we can plan some sort of event where we can just let the community know that you belong here, you are wanted here, I think that would be a helpful way to move forward. I do appreciate your statement at the beginning of tonight. But I think we need more than the statement. We need action. And we need to show that there's far more love than there is hate.
Agreed. And I think we have a lot of great community organizations that can help out with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, council. My name is Kaye Brooks. I am from 134 Roslin Avenue. I'm not very close to here, but I do travel around here quite frequently. I'm non-binary and mixed race. I think this is very important to state because we are all part of this racial caste system. And we need to abolish this. Now, a lot of you may be looking at me like I'm crazy, thinking, okay, Jim Crow ended in 1964. But let's take a minute to think of the things that have happened over the years. In 2016, the last school was desegregated in Cleveland School District of Mississippi. That was in 2016. There are still active court orders today under active court-supervised desegregation, meaning there are still schools that are segregated. In between racial injustices happening across the country, there was the national tragedies of George Floyd and Breonna Taylor, taken too soon by the system designed to hurt them. I come from a strong family of black intelligence. So much so that when all 10 of my grandparents and great aunts and uncles were in children in school, they would be called Oreos because they were black on the outside and white on the inside. Obviously, there is a huge racial implication that intelligence is a whites-only attribute. This was back in 1965. My grandma was 11. Flash forward to 2010. I was nine years old, 46 years after that event. After the Jim Crow era, I was in elementary school, not too far from here. And the kids were going around giving kids Oreo flavors. And I was the peanut water Oreo because I wasn't dark enough. But I was white on the inside. To be considered an Oreo, this is colorism. This colorism has existed for hundreds of years, since the transatlantic slave trade. And it is time that we properly educate and punish those dangerous radical rhetoric, this dangerous rhetoric that is getting black children harmed and killed. My family has been on the East Coast for six generations, and the colorism is the same. We need to be doing this type of analysis in our houses, in our grocery stores, our neighborhoods, our government, and our schools. This is a group effort, and if you don't contribute to the harm that it causes, especially when reinforcing ICE having an aggressive force affecting the necessary aspects of our community, you want this mass incarceration for innocent people, but have a lax judgment for the KKK. Whose message is to harm all non-Christians, non-whites, but that's my queer little perspective. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm Catherine Johnston. I'm 300 East Keller Street. I'm also pastor at Mechanicsburg Presbyterian Church. And I want to let the people know behind me, because I'm addressing you, that the biggest thing we can do is, first, you showed up tonight, which is awesome because the best thing we can do is show that this kind of hate is not welcome in this community. And the clergy are getting together and putting together a peace rally. I wish I could have told you exactly when it was gonna be, but they're moving a little slower than I would like. But what I want to let you know is whether you're a Christian or a non-Christian, please come out to that because it's not about being Christian, it's about standing up against hate. So this Friday, next Friday, I'm not sure, we'll get it on social media. We'll put it out as best as we can. But don't look at that when you see that, please know that we are standing up against hate. We're standing up against what just happened. We're standing up against racism and homophobia and antisemitism and xenophobia, all those things. And we just happen to be a bunch of Christians that get paid to be Christians. So please still come to that. Everyone's going to be invited. And it is so important that we all like swell out into the streets wherever this is gonna be so that the folks that did this know that this is not welcome here. It is unacceptable and is not what Mechanicsburg is all about. Thank you.
Amen.
Anyone else? Citizens comment? Seeing none. Move on to the mayor's report.
October 4, open house at the museum and the Union Church. This is the church's 200th year anniversary. Gave out maps of Mechanicsburg and answered many history questions. Museum had carriage rides and music by the singer band. The sixth, Union Church meeting at the museum. Finances and maintenance were discussed. 14th, Mechanicsburg Chamber of Commerce Halloween Parade. Great weather, fabulous turnout. The mayor's office, with the help of family, gave out 200 pounds of candy. 17th, 18th, 19th, Friends of the Simpson Library book sale at their new building. The best sale we ever had. 20th, Magic Club entertained veterans from the Lebanon hospital at the local VFW. Veterans were bused from Lebanon. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moving on to the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Councilwoman Agartha makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman O'Neill seconds. Any discussion?
I would like to remove the 2026 Streetsuiting Contract to Public Works.
You missed the opportunity to do that.
Ah, no. Okay. Well, I guess I have nothing to complain about then.
Do you want to complain about it now?
No, I'm good. I'll just accept my defeat.
Robert's rules are tough, aren't they?
I know.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? No. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda items are approved. Moving on to the regular agenda.
First item, discussion and action to award the next lowest possible bidder staffer mechanical contractor as the mechanical contractor for the 219 East Main Street Interior Renovations Project in an amount not to exceed $129,900.
So moved. I'll second.
Vice President Anthony moves. Mr. Booker seconds. Any discussion?
If I may, Mr. President, just a little bit of background. Council will recall that at the September 16 meeting, council took action to award contracts for the renovation project at 219 East Main Street. It was four separate prime contracts for general electric, HVAC, and plumbing. Two of those contracts, one for, I believe it was mechanical and the other for electrical, were awarded to a contractor, ICGM Group. Following the award of the contract to ICGM Group, Penone Engineering notified the contractor that they were the lowest responsible bidder. The contract had been awarded to them. ICGM Group did submit a signed contract, but subsequent to submitting the signed contract and performance and payment bonds notified the borough that they were wanting to withdraw their bid because of certain economic reasons associated with performance of the contract. We are in the process of working through this issue with ICGM Group, the resolution of their attempt to withdraw their bid. That being said, not wanting to delay the project, it's my recommendation, the administration's recommendation that council provisionally award the contract for electrical contract and mechanical contract to the next lowest bidder based upon the competitive bid process, subject to and contingent upon resolution of this issue with ICGM Group. We still need to work through some legal issues before we're at a point where we have a clear runway for actually moving forward with entering into contracts with the second lowest responsible bidders. But we want to have this approval on the books or a contingent approval on the books so that we can resolve issues with ICGM Group and then not delay the project moving forward. So with that background, while there has been a motion and a second, I'd like to read a proposed motions to accept, see if you'd accept an amendment to the original motion.
Sure.
And my recommendation would be a motion to provisionally award the electrical contract for the 219 East Main Street Interior Renovation Project to Selson Electric LLC in the amount of $115,475, subject to and contingent upon the effective rescission or resolution of the prior award to ICGM Group originally approved on September 16, 2025. So that's my suggested motion. So that would be if the council member who made the motion would be willing to amend his motion to reflect that.
Mike.
I do.
The first one was in the county.
And I still second.
Is it a combined?
Is it a combined motion?
There are two separate motions on the agenda. Are we combining them?
Oh, no.
Okay.
We'll get to the next one.
Okay, you read the next one first.
Okay.
Separately.
We have a revised motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The revised motion is approved. The next motion, suggested motion?
The next suggestion motion is same subject, different contract. This is for the mechanical contract. And the recommended motion is a motion to provisionally award the mechanical contract for the 219 East Main Street Interior Renovation Project to staffer mechanical contractor in the amount of $129,900, subject to and contingent upon the effective rescission or resolution of the prior award to ICGM Group originally approved on September 16, 2025.
So moved.
Vice President Anthony moves. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilman Booker seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to the committee meeting portion of the meeting tonight, Borough Manager's Report.
Manager's report is online, up to date. Couple of changes to the last page. The recycling program that the county was offering for tires is over. The last was in September, so that's been removed. And then there, the update on the fire station, I just need to get that in there tonight. So as far as what the next steps are for the next couple of weeks. But other than that, barring your questions, I don't have anything else.
Finance Administration ordinance, Mr. Anthony?
Accept that we are about to go into budget season and budget meeting season. That's always fun. And we're also putting together a loan review committee review meeting to kind of recreate the loan committee that's coming up, I think, in two weeks, if I remember correct, or I'm sorry, the 18th of November, actually. Yep, that's all.
All right. Public Works and Safety, Mr. Bierig is not here. Do we have anything from sanitary sewer?
No, Curtis couldn't make it tonight. He's feeling ill.
Okay. Public Works Department, Mr. Lair.
Good evening. How are you? The report has been updated. We will be adding a few more tabulations and some metrics of final calculations for end of season, you know, spring and summer activities. Leaf collection starts Monday. 2025 crack sealing program was completed. 6,750 pounds of sealant was applied to Borough Streets.
That's it. That's a great, great statistic.
By Borough staff, yes.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Lair?
I'd like to add that CH and his team have already started getting ready for winter season. And so you'll start seeing those metrics show up on his slides that are in the manager's report. And he's already doing some maintenance and some repairs on the trucks to get ready. And I think that the team will be ready again this year.
There's no prediction.
Six feet, six feet.
Six feet.
At once or?
When's the first one?
All at once.
He wants it six feet. I will say, I'm always happy that I see on the report X number of potholes reported. Every single one of them has been addressed. You guys are amazing in doing, getting that done. I know how you do it.
The system that we have, has been put in place is effective. If they come through in an online report, they are addressed. It's an effective way for me to report them as well.
See you all at go home. It's pretty much.
It's a game. Yeah.
Yep, exactly.
Smell something, say something.
Yeah.
Everything? Yep, that's great.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Engineer.
So the main topic I have for tonight is an update on paving program. The biggest update, Norway Street, heavily discussed last meeting. That has been initial paving, the initial paving has been done as of today. They will come back tomorrow and do the final pave, and the road will be put back together. We'll get everything sealed up, so that road will be taken care of. And then we'll move on to Allendale Road, which has been another big topic of discussion. So that'll probably take place throughout the rest of the week. And then we'll move on to East Coover Street where we ran into some underground issues that were unforeseen, somewhat foreseen but unforeseen. And then we'll move on to the alleys next week. Any questions?
Thank you. I appreciate your patience as we continue to push for a rapid conclusion to the project because we've received a lot of complaints about it. And we appreciate your patience with us and trying to keep the contractor on schedule.
Yep. Thank you.
The dirt is coming.
Sorry.
Public Safety Department reports. Please, Chief.
My report dealing I'd like to bring attention to is we are very proud that Sergeant Lazarovich ran in the Special Olympics torch run on the 26th of September. He ran the leg that ran down Main Street in the borough. For those of you that aren't familiar, they carried the torch to start the Games, like they do the Olympics. And it's just something that Tim participated in every year, and he did it also raises money. So we're very happy if you're interested in seeing any of that. It is on crime watch on our Facebook page. But we're very proud of his efforts in that endeavor, and that was one of his community-oriented police projects. So getting some of those done.
Thank you, Chief. Mechanicsburg Volunteer Fire Department. President Trace.
Good evening. I think it's great to see all of them left already, but just seeing everybody here tonight for a change. I wish you'd be here every council meeting. I'm sure you would wish the same thing, so. You have my report. I just added a little bit here to it. Fire officers are proceeding with going through the hiring of the paid firefighters. So that's progressing. It's gonna take a little bit of time. Let me see here. I haven't been up to the fire station site recently. I think Saturday was the last time I was up there. So I don't know how, what the weather did to it as far as this week, as far as doing any work. But they are gonna be working on some of their stormwater management items up there.
Lot of activity.
Was there up there? I haven't, I wasn't up there yet this week.
Made a lot of progress from my unofficial perspective.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah.
Big hole. Yeah.
We're still waiting for approval from PennDOT for their highway occupancy permit, which is going through the borough and everything. So we're hoping within the next month or so, that should be wrapped up with them. We just came, well, I just came aware last week of another local grant available known as the LSA. That deals with money in regards to the gambling. And I had a team's meeting today with some various individuals who will be helping us along with that. And we were just coming up with some ideas as far as possible purchases. And I got a meeting tomorrow night with the members of the fire department. And I already put a bug in their ear a little bit far as think of things that can, we might be able to go for that will help out with the community as far as enhancements and everything. So we're working on that. That'll be gone out here real soon. So that's really all I have right now. Is there any questions or comments or anything? I've been working with, a little bit with the Borough Manager and the treasurer a little bit as far as getting, as far as finances, with the change of leadership as far as the fire administration and all that, as far as working on next year's Borough Budget and everything. So we're prepared to make meet with the Finance Committee and all that to hash some things out and everything so that we're all on the same playing field and everything, so.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thanks for all you did to make the Halloween parade special for the kids, too. The trucks were there, and you were there as you always are. It was great.
I figured it out already, you know, 40 years.
You're not that old.
I wish. But yeah. I know firefighters enjoyed walking the streets and they, and the ones, as far as streets and treats, they enjoyed that as far as, that was a great day. I was out of town, so I couldn't be there, but that was a great day for streets and streets. If you've ever seen any of the pictures and all that, and all that, you know, so. The case where it is a good place to live.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Trace. EMC is not here to make. So we'll move on to Local Traffic Advisory Committee. Anything?
Yeah, just to highlight what the committee does and makes recommendations for. It's in the manager's report, all the details. But, you know, our role has been to look at traffic calming, pedestrian safety, getting the flow of traffic to move more safely and expeditiously through town. So these are some of the projects that we have been working through as a committee and then making recommendations back to council for certain purchases and making permit applications to PennDOT, or at least getting their opinion on that. So a lot of good work's being done on that committee. You're all invited to attend. It's an open committee, of course. So please, please consider coming to it.
Thank you, Councilman O'Neill. Moving on to Municipal Committee Outreach, Councilman Booker.
Yeah, so I believe we start with the library liaison report.
Mr. Anthony, Mike, do you have any?
I remembered that they are, they're advertising this month, for the entire month of October, is a money raiser over. over at Jojo's Pizza and Pasta every Wednesday from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. So buzz on over to Jojo's, support the local library.
Yeah, I do have some updates about some of the programming they're doing the rest of this month as well. So on the 22nd, we have a dealing with cyber and social media threats, 7:00, 8:30 p.m. to help identify scams and protect devices. Tales for Tales returns on 10/23, 6:00 p.m., where kids can read to therapy dogs. Scrabble meets 10/23, 1:15 p.m. And the Apple Users Group for Seniors meets at 10/24 at 1:00 p.m. So, and then some of their regular reading clubs like Dungeons and Dragons for teens, for teens on 10/24, 6:00 p.m. Halloween Trivia, 10/25, 6 to 8 on Zoom. And then families can also enjoy a block party and puzzle party that morning. And Tween Scenes Halloween Party on 10/27 at 6:00 p.m. And then just a heads up that this week is Friends of the Library Week. Thank you to the Friends of the Simpson Public Library. And if you join this week to support the library for fundraising, volunteering, and advocacy, you can receive a $4 coupon for the February 2026 book sale. So lots of good stuff out there going on in the library.
Thank you. Do you want to touch on school?
Surely, yes. First, I'm wondering, I've always wanted to learn Dungeons and Dragons. Do you think they'd let me come?
No.
No.
I think they'd be happy to have you. I just feel like you have time.
It's hours, hours.
Is it hours?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But if you go, I will join you.
Oh, ooh.
Yeah.
Challenge accepted. All right. School Board had a couple of, it was kind of a shorter meeting, but one of the things that they've initiated is a brand new program that's an international program called the Link Crew. And basically what it is, is it's a mentoring program for ninth graders using 12th graders, which sounds really cool to me, that they use 12th graders to mentor ninth graders through the first part of their year in high school. There's lots of studies out there that say that the first year is a critical year. So sounds like a really cool program. They're starting it up. It's also a leadership development program. And the other major point that they talked about is they're doing a bond refinance, where they're going to save somewhere between $450 and, $250 and $450,000 on a refinance of their 2018 bond or nine, yeah, bond. They had nine firms bid on it. And let's see, there are no other updates on the state budget funding issues. And they're also talking about, there's an issue right now where there are kids that are going to religious schools, high schools, who want to participate in sports at MASH, or they want to participate in sports in high school, public high schools. I don't think MASH has any right this moment, but that is a conversation that's happening either statewide or countrywide. Anyway, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Anthony.
That's all I have from Municipal Committee Outreach.
Community and Economic Development, Councilwoman Agaritan.
Well, I will turn it right back to Councilwoman Anthony. Do you have anything for the Loan Review Board?
Nothing beyond what I mentioned before about us having a meeting on the 18th.
Was there any updates for the Planning Commission?
No updates. I believe the October meeting was canceled.
We did meet for hard this last month. We are doing planning session, doing a lot of goal setting and kind of revamping what we're doing. Great group to be part of. So that's really all I have to report. Downtown Partnership, I do want to extend a big thank you to our Councilwoman Laura for helping with Amazza Music, probably one of the most successful events, most hiring event. I slept all day Sunday. So we probably had about, I'm going to guess because the official numbers are, but plus over 700 attendees. The bands kept kicking all night. There was a really great mascot dressed up in a beer costume, balloons. I don't know who it was, but they were really cool and could dance well. But it was a fun time. It was great to see people out downtown listening to music. Revolutionary Hot Sauce was kicking all day long. All of the vendors there said that they were running out of supplies. So I'm just tickled pink, and thank you for all your support with that. It was a successful event for our Downtown Mechanicsburg Partnership. Followed after the treats, a suite, suites of treats. I always get it backwards. So it was a very full day downtown, and I'm very proud of that. DMP also met for their planning session this week. So thank you to Vice President Anthony and President Kyle for coming down there and talking about our vision for economic thriving downtown. And I think we probably set some really good goals going forward, and I'm excited to see what the new year brings them. So now I will turn it over to Ms. Yerke for her in and around Downtown Mechanicsburg.
Good evening, everyone. You have a copy of my report. This Thursday, the About Face Review Panel, that's five members, will be meeting with the borough to talk about the revamped program and successes and anything that we need to take a look at and consider in terms of changes. So that's what I have there. The Wesley United Methodist Church was up for auction a couple of weeks ago. There was a high bidder. That person had a medical emergency that day. That transaction did not go through. And the auctioneer and realtor who handled that has told me that he expects that that property will go up for sale, will be listed within a couple of weeks. That was about a week ago. He told me that, so watch for that. Studio 122 is a new barber shop that's coming to West Main Street. One East Main Street, where the Content Creators Collective is located, has been sold. Owner Shannon Confair will continue to work there and expand that business. The PNC properties, those three parcels, has, there's been a price drop. That is now 1.1 million, still for sale, still no interested parties. Angelina's Brewery and Grill, you know, I contact him every month, and he tells me it's very, very, very soon. Not just very soon, but very, very soon. So we'll check in another couple of weeks on that. We have a new plant store. It's located within the main studio, which is on East Simpson Street. Lots of house plants there. And Halal Munch will open in the former deli 33 in the Mechanicsburg Retail Center Plaza at 33 East Simpson Street. I have another property that's not in your report that is for sale. That's 46 West Main Street. It's been referred to a couple ladies who are interested in coming downtown. They prefer to lease but are open to considering the purchase of a property. That's where Keystone Trail Associates Association is located now. And that church is, excuse me, that property is owned by the First Church of God. That's what I have. Anything for me?
Thank you, as always. We appreciate your report. That is the end of my report. I'll go ahead and turn it back.
Thank you. Property Parks and Recreation, Councilwoman Martin.
So we, the Events Committee does have a page in the Borough Management Report, so you can see everything going on there. We have finished up our Railroad Avenue events for the year, but we still have Rocky Horror Picture Show in Memorial Park on October 25th. There will be a costume contest with a $50 gift card from Wolf Brewing Company for the winner. Wolf Brewing Company will be pouring beer that night, and we will have a popcorn truck, popcorn and other snacks. That is a 21 and over event. If you're interested in joining the Events Committee to plan all these wonderful fun things in the borough, our next meeting is scheduled for November 12th. Councilwoman Agaritan, Shade Tree, and EAC.
Well, we keep on meeting, and we keep on planting more trees. So people are coming to us, and we're making great recommendations to keep our trees thriving downtown and making sure that we're only taking down the trees that need to. Great group. Again, if you want to join, please come and be part of it. EAC, we do our joint meetings. Nothing really new to report, but just a great working committee. End of report.
Thank you. Personnel Committee, Councilman O'Neil, anything? Nothing? That concludes committee section of the meeting. Second opportunity for citizens comment. Is there anyone here who would like to make citizens comment?
Lauren Stoner, 408 North Gilbert Street. What question you did not include school side on your list, is it done?
It's not.
It is not done. Oh. So the whole thing that is really irritating about this entire project is where they are at the ends. They've left these cliffs that, like, had they sloped them just a little bit, people would not be complaining nearly as much as what they are. So if they go back and just put a little bit in there just to make it a little bit better transition, that would be fabulous.
Let's just get the roads done.
Well, I agree. But if, we can't get them all done right now. At least make it a little better. Streets of Treats was great. The only complaint I have is the mess on the square. We had kids walking all over Main Street, out in the street because they couldn't use sidewalk. So there needed to be some sort of an adjustment there. Cones placed out, barriers placed out into the first, you know, the first parking spaces so that there was a walk area there. But hopefully it won't be there next year.
It'll be done next year.
It'll all be good.
Thank you.
Anyone else for citizens comment? Seeing none, moving on to other business. Do we have any other business from this side of the room? Any other business from this side of the room? Mr. Mayor.
I only want to applaud Pastor Catherine and the churches for rallying so quickly to have an event to express love in our community. I think that's really cool. Thank you for that.
I want to echo that's how disheartening, and I know a lot of you came here because of how disheartening it was. We just are not going to stand down and accept this kind of behavior in our community. And I love the fact that everyone came here with the same mindset that we're not going to back down to hate, and we're going to rally together and unify and show that Mechanicsburg is an inclusive community, that we love everybody, that we're not going to discriminate. And hopefully that we just won't have another issue like that. But knowing that these things do happen in small towns, and we just have to stand firm together and don't let them crack us. So thank you, guys, for all attending tonight.
No, I'd just like to echo the comments of Councilwoman Agaritan and Vice President Anthony. And thank everyone for coming out tonight and expressing your concerns and sharing our concerns and joining with us to express that Mechanicsburg is an inclusive place and a place where we celebrate everybody and our diversity. And that we want to be a welcoming community, and we are a welcoming community. So thank you. Appreciate everyone coming out.